Call the meeting to order. I advise everyone in attendance that this meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? There being no one, you join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. Are there any citizens' comments before we begin? There being none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 16, 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. We can now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item up for business is an overview from Mr. Fahey. He does this regularly regarding grounds and buildings. And actually, he and Mr. Gray have some exciting news to share, so with your permission, I will invite Mr. Fahey to the podium.
Good evening.
As Dr. Benau stated, I do this pretty much every year regarding the buildings and ground update. We'll start at the football field area and work our way around very quickly. As you know, last year, we surfaced a track at the high school. It's underway. We also put some additional storage behind the bleachers. We put exactly 10 storage bins in there, lockable. And the nice thing about it, they have the matching blue privacy slots. Again, it's more storage that our youth groups can use. Football from soccer field, happy to report, no open seams. Last year, it came before you in the fall, we talked about probably about 240 open seams. So, the warranty is working. They did a fabulous job last year. Nothing to report as of this time. Baseball, no news. No news is good news. Softball field, we actually, today, the DPW resurfaced the infield mix. So, that's basically where it needs to be. That's it for pretty much outside of buildings. Building is pretty strong. We put, last year, we put out the bid inside the building, the air conditioning project. And unfortunately, our bids came back pretty high. Basically, highest bid was $775,000. Low bid was $629,000. Extremely over budget. We have funds available from MSBA, and plus, we have an offset for our CIP to accommodate the low bidder. But myself and Mr. Gray are going to bring the vendor in, along with the architect, for the project on Thursday, just to make sure that we can't afford any change orders if we move forward with this project. If not, we'll be required to put the thing back out to bid. And that project involves installing chillers up on the roof to service the air conditioning for the classrooms and also the gymnasium. Also, what else is happening at the high school? As you know, we just did a lighting upgrade in the foyer. Happy to report the savings. The savings by the LED lights are phenomenal. To give you an idea, 14,338 kilowatts is what we're running before per hour. With the LED lighting that we put in, we reduced it down to 4,685 kilowatts. So, it's phenomenal. And if you notice it, it's so much brighter for more than half. We're going to be doing the same thing for the gymnasium as well, and working with Guardian Energy to replace all our lights inside our gym, which we talked about previously. That will happen in the very near future. And there were other buildings. We just don't do all that work at the high school. We do spread a little bit around. At the Albemine Middle School, we replaced the fence up by the soccer field that runs parallel to the building. We also did a lot of painting at the middle school. Refurbished the auditorium, the music room. Painted approximately 11 classrooms, so our April vacation. And this is actually, a lot of this work that was done in-house by our own custodians for the painting project. And I don't know if now is the time you want to talk about the playground?
We can, yes. And the accelerated repair to both of those, yeah.
Okay. I don't have a slide projected, actually, unfortunately, but I do have a drawing out here. What we're proposing to do is install basically the same type of a playground that we have currently at our elementary schools in the back of the Albemine Middle School now. So, here is the layout right here. I don't know what's the best way to do this.
Yeah, just leave it there.
That's fine.
We're proposing to do that before the summer comes, to get that project done, because we're also going to be, I'm jumping right into the project that we're doing at the middle school we got in the parking lot. The parking lot, we hired a designer, Graves Engineering, to design our parking lot for the merge. We're hopeful to put the thing out to bid. We've yet to go in front of planning board, but that, I believe, is our next step. We met with the DCG from the town last week. Things went well. What we're proposing to do there, basically, is three quarters of the field that you see out at the current middle school will be utilized as parking area. So, the idea is to get everybody off the street, queue in the inside, drop off and pick up. Have all 10 of our buses in one line for dismissal, to make the transition very smooth, flow very safely. That's the design, pretty much in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions about the design?
Are there any questions about any of the presentation? I just have one quick one, Joe. When we're talking about the baseball field, when we're talking about that receding infield, you were talking about we're losing, how is that shaping up right now? Are there any foreseeable issues coming up in the future with that?
For the baseball?
Basically, yeah, the baseball field.
The baseball field in the corner is basically, it's a pony league. It's a small field. We're talking about the same thing?
No, I'm talking about at the high school itself, the maintenance of-
The baseline, that we keep the six inches in.
Oh, actually, again, I just, all I did was I said that there's no news, nothing's changed at the high school. What we did in the fall is the DPW, along with the help from Field Turf, when they came in to do those 240 scene repairs, they also went over to the baseball field, because we're very concerned about the overspray that we were getting. They did was, basically, they said, you can figure around six inches per year. We've been holding true to about, probably about a foot. Until last year, we, you know, we threw up the flag and said, hey, wait a minute, we've got three feet here. We had some pretty big concerns. What Field Turf recommended, and the DPW assisted us, is they came in with their sweeper, really, very aggressively swept it out, pushed it back onto the field. So, it's, you know, it's in very good shape compared to what it was. And that's an ongoing problem that we deal with. And we had consultants come in, and, I mean, this is just, it's drilled in me, six inches per year, but we've been holding true to about a foot, which speaks about the regular maintenance that's being done on it now, not only by the DPW, but mostly by our, in this particular case, by our baseball team. If you notice, they come, after every game, it was just brought up to us, they spend about a half an hour after the game, regrooming the field. Now, I don't know if that's more, if they win or lose, I don't know.
They won last night, and they were doing it when they went back to Humanities College, so I don't know.
They do take an awful lot of pride, and it does show.
That's a great facility, do a great job.
It really is.
Thank you.
Do you want to report now on the accelerated repair? Just an update on that of the two of you?
Sure. Go ahead, I'll fill in the gaps.
Okay. Thanks. I'm breathing a little bit easier now. Always tough to get rolling, but once I get going, I'm okay. Mr. Gray and myself, along with each principal of each building, had a site visit today by the MSBA. Kevin Sullivan and-
Michelle.
Gresh.
I'm going to call her Michelle, even though it's a bad name. Hel Wagner.
Oh, is that Joe?
Don't ask me to repeat it. She was a very nice lady. Very nice lady.
And another representative for MSBA.
And I'll tell you, she's not afraid to get her hands dirty. We were very surprised, after she did meet with us, Kevin and Kevin, they asked us questions, you know, about the conditions of our roof. I'll give you Bryn Mawr, for example. We toured the classrooms, and then she said, I showed her pictures on the roof, and she said, well, how do you get up to the roof? And we're like, yikes. We'll get you the ladder. So, she literally went up to the ladder, went up onto the roof with Kevin and Sullivan. They took some pictures. They took an awful lot of pictures of our buildings, and they kept themselves, and I believe they're pretty happy with what they saw. We took them to Bryn Mawr School, toured the building, toured the roof. We went to the middle school. We were bragging about our project that we're doing there, hoping that maybe we can get a little bit more funding for the project as well, because it's just, you know, it's a win for not only the MSBA, but a two-win for us as well. So, we took a tour there, and again, she went up onto the roof as well. This time, she had to, well, she got onto the roof. After a slight visit there, we ventured off to Packard Chog, did the walk through a Packard Chog. Again, they're very, I think they're very impressed of our buildings, you know, they went up to the roof, you know.
They met with us at Bryn Mawr, and that was the first school we visited, so they gave us the basic idea of what was going on with the program. Last year, which was their first year, they had about 70-plus schools that applied for the accelerated program, and they awarded grants to 50 of them. This year, they had 117. And so, what Kevin and this Michelle do is they go to each of the schools that have put in a request, and they literally tour every school. They've got one more week of tours to complete. And then, they told us that over the course of the next few weeks, they would be meeting as a team, and they would be notifying those districts that they wish to participate in the accelerated program, to attend the June 4th MSBA Board of Directors meeting in Boston. So, they said, you will know shortly if you are participating. And as Mr. Fahey pointed out, we, within our statement of interest, identified that the middle school, the 10 Swanson Road facility, was our highest priority, but we also wanted to make sure that they knew that we had needs, both at Bryn Mawr and Packard Chog. We did stress the fact that we had a master plan in place, that we were already in the process of building a new middle school, which they were assisting us in, as well as having dedicated CIP funds from previous years, which a lot of districts would not be in that similar situation. The way the process works is if they invite us to participate, we would attend the June 4th meeting, and they basically assign a designer to each district. They pre-qualified nine firms in the state. Mr. Fahey asked if we could choose one of the nine. They said, no, we literally put the participating district's names in a hat, and the first engineering firm goes to, and they pull out the name of the school, so they distribute it equally amongst all nine firms. It's a $15,000 fee. It covers any projects that are with it, a district. So, if they chose all three schools, it would be $15,000. If they chose one, it would be up to $15,000. It would be based on the amount of work they needed to do, but it would not exceed $15,000. So, within that first phase, there would be engineers that would come out, and they would basically do the grunt work to determine what exactly we needed, as opposed to what we put together, which was kind of a cursory review saying, we need a roof, and we think it's going to cost this much. They would be then charged with coming up with more detailed drawings and coming up with a more exact cost. Once that's determined, they notify each of the districts, and the districts have 60 days in order to agree to the next phase, which would be, basically, which projects you wish to participate in. Let me take that back. Once they invite you down, you have 60 days to agree to participate in the $15,000 engineering study. Once the engineering study is done, then they come back with cost estimates, and then the school and the town would have 90 days to decide which projects, if any, they wanted to fund and which they wanted to participate in. So, it's a very detailed process, where at no point in time is anything committed without acknowledgement and acceptance by both the school committee and the town. So, as I said, the first part is the Board of Directors meeting, if we're invited, then we have 60 days to agree if we want the engineering study done, and once the engineering study done and costs are determined, then we have 90 days to determine which projects we'd like them to participate in, based on whatever funds or whatever projects they deemed is necessary. So, as Mr. Fahey said, I think they were impressed that we had our act together, and that we really knew what we wanted to do with our buildings, so I think, and that we had dedicated funds, so I think that hopefully will put us far ahead of some of the other 117 schools to put in for us.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Gray, do you think that the great care that we take in our schools could be a detriment when it comes to the criteria that they use to choose which town or which district?
No, actually, I think it's a positive, because what they're looking at is, this is an accelerated program, which is roof, windows, and boilers. So, they're actually looking at schools that are well-maintained, that they're not just putting a roof on a school that may have lacked the appropriate funds to maintain it. So, likewise, due to Mr. Fahey's efforts to make sure the schools are the best they are, I think that also impressed them. The fact that we are, we do make sure that there are dedicated funds to maintaining our schools. So, while this is an accelerated program, they don't want to put a roof on a building that basically needs a lot more work, just to make sure it doesn't get rained on, and the floors are in horrible shapes, and, you know, the walls are. So, I think that was another plus, that the buildings looked extremely well-maintained, so they know that we do maintain them.
That's good. I know that we get extra points once we are appointed. I understand that part of the process. I just didn't know if that would hurt us right now, where we take such good care of the schools. Are they going to go to the school that needs it the most, as far as the windows not staying up, or the windows are broken? Or are they going to invest their money where they know it's going to be taken care of?
I would say the latter of the two. They're going to invest their money where they know that they're getting a good, solid return on their funds, and that the buildings will be maintained and will be used for schools in the immediate future.
So, was that a similar situation that you were in out west, when you were three for three there? Was it the same type of situation?
Well, it was the first year, so as I said, 50 out of the 70 participated, and they put on three brand-new roofs and two new boilers, and likewise, that, those communities also maintain their schools at a high level. So, it was a case of that we had done the regular routine maintenance, so that when you walked in the building, it was clean and, you know, well-maintained, but over time, the roofs had exceeded their useful life, and I think that's why they participated there as well.
And just one last question. I don't know if I was following the timelines, but how would that work out, as far as getting the town to agree to it, as far as town meeting goes, or the scheduled dates that we would be bringing this to them?
I think it would tie into the Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Because if June 4th they announce, and then 60 days you have after that, it would be close.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I would guess that if you get to the architectural study, and then you have 90 days of which to accept that, well, actually, we don't have to go to town meeting, because the funds are already-
Yeah, the funds are available. And I think that was a big selling point, that everyone was impressed with, that the CIP program that we do have addresses a lot of these issues already. And one thing that they also brought up, too, is when we're doing our walkthrough, is they said they're already thinking about changing the name from the Accelerated Repair Program, because some communities are thinking that this is just a quick repair, but they want to go in and look at the buildings, see how well they're maintained, that it's more than just a repair, because it's their investment that they're putting into us. So, they want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure our building is to the highest standard that needs to be, rather than relying on them to come in and basically just do repairs. So, that's why they're already thinking about changing their name.
No, one more question, sorry. When you say that we don't have to go to town meeting with it, but you said earlier that we have to have the town in agreement with the school committee?
The same process when we, when we put in our statement of interest, the school committee would say that they were, you know, they'd have stock language that the MSBA provides that says, you know, we are, as a school committee, agree that we want to pay up to $15,000 and have an enduring study done, and then that would go to the selectmen, and the selectmen would have to vote on the same language, and then it would say to the MSBA that the town and the school committee have acknowledged and agreed that this is the next step we want to take.
So, those are the only two boards that we need to be concerned with?
Right.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
You know.
One thing I really want to say, Joe, I know you guys have done a great job in the planning and stuff for this, and the thing with the CIP is tremendous for the taxpayers. You don't have to go out and ask the taxpayers for more money to do it. That's fantastic. But the thing is, how far forward do you have to go when you're doing, you're showing your planning situations for each school? Do they have a designated year, or do you just?
For the MSBA program?
Yes.
That's to be determined. So, that's to be determined. I don't want to give an answer that it's going to start in 15.
Okay, no, if you don't know, that's fine with me.
Because if anything, that might help us. And the only thing that we would, might have to go back to town meeting on, is if we don't have sufficient funds in one building, we might have to address it from another.
So, that'd be like a transfer, you mean?
It'd be like a transfer of existing funds. Like, they might come back with a higher dollar amount than we have-
Right.
For, let's just say, the roof at Bryn Mawr School, and we might have to make an adjustment that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fahey. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Moving on to the strategic planning.
Yes. Just to provide you an update, we have continued our work on strategic planning. We'll actually be meeting tomorrow as a team for the afternoon, where I think we'll be in pretty good shape at the conclusion of that. Our goal is to bring it forward at May 7th, school committee meeting, but I'll provide you an update at May 6th, prior to town meeting next week. You want to stay? Good. The Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Awards. We've listed here, and I'll read aloud the names of the recipients this year, but want to make an announcement again to thank the Chamber of Commerce for their generosity. They do these awards every year. It totals here, I believe, $11,000 to our students, and the funds for this are raised primarily, and I actually think exclusively, through the golf tournament that they hold at Heritage each fall. And they do 50/50 award raffles, you saw at a recent meeting, they give back half of the money to the school. So, they're extremely generous, as are so many of our community civic organizations to us, and at upcoming meetings, you'll see that, which is really a tribute to, I think, the partnership, you know, that we have with the broader community, that they're helping our students. So, to announce them, the $2,000 Stephen Lucas Memorial Scholarship is being awarded to Cassidy, and these students have already known this, so I'm not breaking any surprises. Cassidy McIntyre for $2,000. There are five $1,000 scholarships being awarded. Matthew Basalian, Catherine Coughlin, Claire Hutner, Jack Ledger, Janelle Wheeler. One $500 trade scholarship will actually go to Christian Matthews as an Auburn student, attending Bay Path Vocational, graduating from there. And then, they also added member scholarship recipients. There's a $2,000 Major David L. Broder Memorial Scholarship, and that is being awarded to Matthew Blaze. And then, two additional $1,000 scholarships to Catherine Hoy and Emily King. So, congratulations to all of them, and thanks again to the Chamber of Commerce for their great, great works. The next item, this was a very exciting piece of news, and I hesitated whether to share it or not, because I've not yet received official notification from Massport and/or JetBlue, but it came through the media, and it has been confirmed that it is accurate, that recently, last week, they had their 50,000th passenger at Worcester Regional Airport. So, in recognition of that, they're offering two round-trip airline tickets free of charge to the valedictorians in Worcester, as well as those in Auburn and Leicester. So, I believe that total is 15 valedictorians in total. So, look forward to hearing directly from them, but, and they get to go to either Fort Lauderdale or Orlando.
Disney-bound.
Disney-bound, it looks like. But, so, a great, a great opportunity for the valedictorian. So, I'll share that information more detail with you. Look forward to sharing it with him or her, once determined to.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business.
The superintendent's evaluation. If you have your completed documents, you can give those to Mr. Laurie. The goal being to do the public announcements of those at the next meeting. And then, just wanted to remind you, town meeting is, don't seem possible that we're already at May town meeting, but your warrant booklets are here, and I did want to point out to you, we provided for you in the packet a copy of the, we always like to try to provide a detailed information to town meeting members for their consideration in advance of the meetings, and as noted here, we, I expanded on the explanation, because we're seeking those transfers, especially those regarding the CIP, to your point, Mr. Scobie, and in reference to what Mr. Fahey and Mr. Gray were talking about. So, really tried to outline and tie in that this is work that includes both the master plan team, and as a result of the school committee's work by extension. So, hopefully, if anyone has questions, town meeting, I'd be happy to answer them in advance, but we will be providing a presentation on the 6th as well.
Moving on to new business.
For new business, so I already jumped ahead, that was the warrant articles. In terms of town meeting, we did schedule a meeting for 6:30 in the guidance office, as we typically do, and will recess during the meeting and then adjourn following the conclusion of the town meeting. And then, upcoming events, just to remind, the community, the Auburn Rotary Scholarship Breakfast will actually take place this Sunday at Auburn High School from 8 to 12. There will be many guest flippers, as we're called, flipping pancakes during that time, and this civic organization likewise provides numerous scholarships to our students, so thank them in advance for that. And then, also, next week, the Festival of the Arts, STEM, and Wellness at Auburn High School, and it includes items from across the district. And if you remember last week, the presentation that Mr. Bernard, Mrs. Barrios, and Mrs. Aries, and a student presented, there'll be the STEM up on the third floor, as well as lots of art, samples of artwork from every student, who are taking art at this time of year in the gym, music in the hallway and on the bridge, and it's a very exciting time, so everyone is invited to please stop by, anytime between 4:00 and 7:30.
Does anyone else have anything on the new business? We can now move on to the business and financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing before you is transfers. As we further get to the end of our fiscal year, we become more refined in what we can see for issues and shortfalls, as well as other things that we want to make sure we accomplish between now and June 30th. So, before you, you see a list of transfers, which are for your informational purposes. I don't know if anybody has any questions about those particular transfers.
Doesn't appear there are any?
Okay. And on the other side, I would ask your approval for some transfers between series. Once again, these are analysis that we've completed to determine that there are funds available in these certain lines, and we're trying to, once again, move funds around in order to correct any shortfalls that we may have in our budget.
I apologize.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfers from the 2,000 and 3,000 series to the 1,000 series, from the 2,000, 3,000, and 5,000 series to the 4,000 series, and from the 3,000 series to the 4,000 series, as requested by the business office.
I'll second that. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next thing, Mr. Chair, was the fact that we received notification back at the end of February that a former Auburn High School graduate, Mrs. Pat Bork-Hertzfeld, was interested in establishing a scholarship in memory of her parents, Robert and Patricia Bork. And so, over the course of the next couple of months, we've put together the package to determine, as she has requested, on how she wants to honor her parents and award two $1,000 scholarships for the next couple of fiscal, next couple of school years. She's indicated that she will self-fund that this year and next year, and then once her parents' estate has been finalized, she wants to deposit permanent funds with the Greater Worcester County Community Foundation to continue that tradition of honoring her parents with two $1,000 scholarships to a graduate of the Auburn High School. So, I would ask that the committee acknowledge and accept those funds.
With gratitude, I'd entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous vote.
And I assume a letter of gratitude.
Absolutely, yes. And just as a comment to that, I think it is such a tribute to one's parents to leave such a legacy. I know our cable operator this evening does the same thing in honor of his parents, and and, uh, just another way to give back to, to our future. So wonderful that they're doing that, that she's doing that.
Now we can move on to personnel. Excuse me, Mr. Chief.
Do you have a card about the budget?
Oh, yes, I do, yes. Yeah, that was one of the, yes, yep.
Sorry, that's okay. One additional item that we wanna discuss was that there's been some recent, um, now, um, recent issues that have surfaced regarding our fiscal year proposed 15 budget. Um, what I provided you is a copy of a memo that I've, uh, addressed to both you and Dr. Riddell. Basically, what's occurred since the last time we met is that we've recently received a, a late retirement request from one of our elementary school teachers at Packagog. And because that individual had been with us a number of years, there is a difference between her current salary and what we would anticipate a replacement salary would be in fiscal year 15. And additionally, I would like to recommend that the school committee consider adding five additional school choice students so that we can narrow the, uh, difference between what is currently our budget and what the town, um, is recommending. So based on this, these new, um, issues, um, we would like to propose that the budget be, um, the new budget be $23,020,839, um, with these additional, uh, issues that have been brought forward.
I entertain a motion and open it for discussion.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Discussion? Yes. Mr. Scobie?
Just help me to understand the, the retirement shortfall part of it. The, someone is retiring from Packagog immediately or, or at the end of this year?
At the end of the school year.
At the end of the school year.
So we've got her in a, in a, at the budget at her maximum salary, which I believe was a?
Nearly $75,000. So when we, typically if we knew this, uh, retirement back in October, we would have budgeted her replacement as an MA Step 2. So what we're suggesting here is, we currently have her full salary in at the budget, so that we're gonna lower that salary request, which actually lower the budget amount down to the MA Step 2.
Okay.
So this results in a, a net decrease to the budget of, um, $51,226.
And then we're going to add, try to add the additional?
You actually already approved the school choice, so with that amount, so that just further reduces the budget. So there's, what we're asking the school committee for this evening is to approve this new budget amount, because typically, school choice funds we use as, as offsets. And you approved at a couple of meetings ago, the five additional slots. We just hadn't deducted those or reduced the budget by that amount.
Okay, I just thought there was a five?
Not new ones. No, no.
So my understanding is we're actually coming in at the recommended?
We're very close to it at this point and we continue to look at it. We may, by May 6th, but we're going very small.
Cause we were, was 60,000?
We were $91,000 before, so we're, we're right about $40,000. So we're very close. And we anticipate that there's going to be, um, or are hopeful that there'll be some movement on Circuit Breaker in Chapter 70 and we may even know that before next week's town meeting. So we can update you again on the 6th, but these are ones that we typically always do.
If there are no further questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Great. And the final item, you had approved recently, um, a new job description in to change, um, Dr. Louzay's title to Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning and Curriculum. And with that reform, this is one of the positions that I do need the support of the committee for. It comes with the elimination of the old title for that position as you had requested. And it is my recommendation that you approve this.
I'll make the motion to confirm the appointment of Dr. Kathleen Louzay. This is, excuse me, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning and Curriculum and to approve the elimination of the Director of Teaching, Learning and Curriculum position.
Second that. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I was not in favor of the Assistant Superintendent from the beginning, so I'll be voting no. Has nothing to do with, um, the person that's there now on my vote, so it will be no.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries three to one. I do believe we have to go into executive session.
We do, actually, yes.
So I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session for MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, to discuss strategy with regard to litigation.
Roll call vote?
Uh, Mrs. Gibbrey. Oh, sorry, yes.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
And Mr. Lori.
This doesn't happen often, but good night, everyone.